Good afternoon. It's going to be a call of some state councilor meeting to order, but we do have a board. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Jolie if you would be so kind as to give us the invitation. Thank you so much.
We'll be back in a minute. Good morning, thank you for today, well, thank you for getting to know me, you're a great teacher, so you must see your word. If you have any need to look at that right now, what would you just send your interest towards your word and protect your word. I pray that there be no harm to your word and you put it out in your word. And I pray that you send these righteous things.
Amen. Amen, out of my mouth, okay. Let us stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best of whatever means and for all. Roll call, Melvin Kirk.
President Bowie.
Counselor.
Councilman Bowlin, Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman Jackson.
Present.
Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman LaShaw.
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Present.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Here. As stated before, we do have a board. The character trait of the minds of these quickly and cheerfully caring, cast their virtue of those who are responsible for something. At this time, Council members, here before me, the August 13 agenda, should have a motion on floor to approve the record agenda. We have a motion on floor by Councilman Shaw, Saki, Councilwoman Thomas. Anyhow, discussion. Roll call.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilman Bowlin, Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin. Councilwoman Benjamin.
Oh, I'm not going to add, because I don't want to hold down.
Roll call. Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes. Okay, the record agenda was approved in that suit of Council members present. Council members here before me, the six items to consider for the present agenda. I'm going to go through all six items again at any point in time that you would like to move an item you've made for us to discuss and go on separately. Uh, consent item number one, to approve revenue from Ward 43, that's eighteen nineteen, authorizing the matter to end into a lease agreement with maximum cooperative lease for the purchase of a floor or a building at the land for the amount of two hundred thirty-two thousand four hundred forty-six dollars. Consent item number two, to approve the matter to enter into a contract for service to the Dallas, Dallas area condition and heat in the amount of forty-nine thousand four hundred sixty-one dollars to approve and repair the HVAC system in the Dallas area building. Consent item number three, to approve a legal statement in the amount of nine hundred thirty dollars. Consent item number four, to approve a budget adjustment in excess of ten percent to cover repairs for vehicles and buildings and to cover regulars cost for a total of twenty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, funding being transferred from five thousand dollars from janitor service, five thousand from total supplies, five thousand from travel, tax office and travel and training, three thousand from in-service training and from now, fifty-five to under four thousand, twenty-four thousand dollars being transferred to, uh, vehicle repair maintenance, three thousand to building repair maintenance and one thousand for record service. I don't think I have my glasses on. Consent item number five, to approve a budget adjustment in excess of ten percent to cover the place, concrete driveway for five station number three at fifteen hundred Broad Street, transferring a total of forty-two thousand dollars, thirty-one thousand dollars coming from uniform and clothing and six thousand coming from auto field and now case asset, transferring the forty-two thousand to build and maintenance. Consent item number six, to approve transferring thirty thousand on service, transferring twenty-five thousand to grass cutting line and five thousand to beautification. Fossil to fire department, that on five station three on Broad Street is cracking up where the trucks are going in and it's needed. So at this time, material entertainment motion to place all six items on the present agenda and move forward to accept all six items. Councilwoman.
If I'm allowed, I want to ask about number five, this one wrote back. Tell me what you just said about the conversation.
Well, basically, it was a chief, private chief, granting to the council, uh, want to get our first fellow was breaking up, uh, in front of that top fifteen on Broad Street and he got a bid for forty-two thousand, he had to.
For the concrete driveway?
Concrete driveway.
Is it a lot of driving? It's, I don't get it, it's the, the entire driveway of the Broad Street Fire Station. And it's actually like forty-six thousand, but they're somewhere already in there building repair maintenance. And this just came from one month and one quote, or one month? Well, they've gotten three, two, he's gotten two quotes, um, and they may have to go back, so we're just trying to make sure it may have to be bided out because the person has to go back on site and get the minutes or whatever to just do it based on what was given.
Okay, so we'll just take that from, we'll just remove that from the surrender.
Well, I, I was just making the question available. Yeah, but you seem extreme, so if we can just remove one.
Well, basically, we'll just carry over to the next.
When they measure this way.
Yes, okay. So you have five items to, to, Councilwoman Thomas.
I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, with number four. With, uh, all the budget, the budget adjustment with these items that the repair, uh, did we, this is, uh, such as Brown?
This one. Let's close this one. All right. Councilwoman.
Yes, uh, on number six, uh, this, the, uh, bond that we were up in, Councilwoman Benjamin was asking about, and would it be like five thousand per, uh, for Ward again?
Okay. Yes, thank you, Councilwoman. At this time, the church entertainment was supposed to, so five items up to the present agenda with number five, then carry over for the next one. So we have a motion on floor by Councilman Johnson, by Councilwoman Youngblood, any other discussion? Roll call, Melvin Kirk.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilman Bowlin, Councilwoman Youngblood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes, on one, two, no, on three, yes, on four, and yes, on six.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes. The motion passed. Council members here before you, the July twenty-third minutes, are there any corrections? Hopefully, everyone has had the opportunity to prove to, uh, July twenty-third minutes, are there any corrections, deletions? At this time, the church entertainment motion to adopt the July twenty-third. We have a motion on floor by Councilwoman Youngblood, do we have a second? Do we have a second by Councilwoman Shaw? Roll call, Melvin Kirk.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilman Bowlin, Councilwoman Youngblood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yeah, all will have this thing.
Okay, all right, thank you, the motion passed. Council members, uh, are there any announcements from the, from the ward that you would like to bring forth?
Uh, I just want to take time, uh, Mr. President, to thank, uh, the group that been out in Ward Eight for cutting grass. Uh, first of all, thank all the volunteers, everybody that's going out, doing outstanding job. Also, I want to do a special thing to Ray Brown, Hawa'ka McGee and her group for going out, doing what they're doing, you know, the garbage, trash, uh, cutting hedges along with the, um, uh, uh, weeding and everything that people are doing, uh, to help us out in Ward Eight. Also, I want to thank Spencer Johnson, uh, that got his, um, tractor going out there cutting the fields and things out, and doing the best he can with that, along with everybody. So many people we need to thank, I just, all about to make sure I get it out there. Also, I'd like to, uh, make an announcement that, uh, on August twenty-second, which will be a Thursday, five-thirty at Brown Chapel Church, I'll be having my weed and seed meeting, uh, at Brown Chapel Church at five-thirty on August twenty-second. And a last I want to mention is on August thirty-first, there will be a fishing tournament, uh, at the fishing pond out there in East Cell, uh, at, it's going to be from seven to twelve, and we'll have like two or three carriages. So, uh, on August thirty-first, there will be a fishing tournament. So anybody want to come, just come on out, it's going to start about seven in the morning while it's still cool, we'll go up to noon and it will be getting our trophies, and we'll be having refreshment hot dogs, big some hamburgers and stuff, and sores and stuff. So that will be, and that will be August, that first fishing tournament starting at seven to twelve, and the weed and seed meeting will be five-thirty at Brown Chapel Church on August twenty-second.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman Shaw, is that Councilwoman Thomas? Um, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, I'm sorry. I do want to thank, uh, the people that, uh, on the contract, helping us cut the grass, dealing with damage that, uh, citizens are in violation of the, uh, orders which require you to have a doubt, except, they're so disheartening, Mr. President, that once they go through the business, damage. Very next day, the same place has been delivered, it's almost like we're giving ahead of against the wall and accomplishing nothing. It is truly something that needs to be done and it's basically wasting money, it's not going to help the best, we have to get it done. I think the only, it's all we want to get, is once we get to get in our system that is broken back in operation, that is code enforcement. If we don't have people out there citing people for violation, then our citizens are not continuing to do what they do, and that is deliver our city. It is wrong and it is illegal for them to do this. And I encourage everybody, if you see somebody throwing their household garbage out, you don't have to say nothing to them, write the tag number down. Call the police and let them know that you cited this vehicle on this day, double this knowledge at this particular place. Something has to be done, Councilor. I don't know whether they'll take it, but we're just spending our, when we're talking about not having our code enforcement procedures that is in place on paper, but not, uh, in practice. Until we get back to doing this and running this city, we just going to experience it. Uh, Councilwoman Shaw, we have a weed and seed meeting on this morning, and it was brought forward that we probably go ahead and move forward with three, five justice affairs to, uh, let them be code enforcement because they are part of the post. That will be a big help, Mr. President, to get them into action with anyone and write citations, or more importantly, get the ground better, code enforcement. I don't want to dumbass people, but if that ordinance and it's requiring people to adhere to it, then everybody should be conformed to that law. And if everybody isn't conformed to that law, then we would not be experiencing the dirtiness of the filthyest of our city. We got to get a hold of this, this is coming upon us to. Yeah, also, I talk with Judge, uh, Haygood and also Judge Madison, they're willing to vote, uh, municipal court on Thursday, so much we can put in place, uh, in Brown Court, yes. Hold on, I think that was, uh, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Um, I, I just want to thank the volunteers in, um, Ward Two and it also the cemetery preservation group, who is working tirelessly in the cemetery and everybody who's volunteered to help them as well. Uh, I want to thank also the Pride of Alabama Elks Lodge for their tireless and regular work at Lincoln Place Cemetery, um, that is in Ward Two, over there by Lanes on Medical Center Parkway. That is a private cemetery, but historically, the city has always maintained it. Uh, and so, I think that we're going to have to, even when the city is able to operate at full speed again, we'll probably have to do something else, but anyway, the Pride of Alabama Elks Lodge, kudos to them for stepping in and doing a lot of things than I believe they've been working up there. It's your place too, so here's the sense here, they do some good work, it's definitely your brothers, aren't they?
Yes.
So they, your, your fraternal brothers. Um, and also, I really want to thank the citizens of Ward Two, they have really stepped up and pitched in during this time of, of irregularity and need in the city. They've gone, um, extra, to extraordinary means, they've been begging leases they're supposed to. Now, one time I heard a judge, when a man said, "Well, I've been paying my child support", she said, "Well, you don't get round points for doing what you're supposed to do." But since it had been so long since we had, had, since that had been enforced and it was, every time we, we tried to get underway with doing that, that something has come up, but, but they have really done a lot better job with that. We have some, some lawn companies who refuse to bag the leaves, hopefully we'll be able to work with that, um, later on. Uh, but I want to thank the Landstand Association and the citizens in that group and the Lincoln Place Association and the citizens in that group, um, and just all the citizens in the neighborhood for pitching in and doing extra. Just a little bit means a lot, and if each person would do a little bit like most of my folks do, then it would, would make such a difference, and it does, um, over in the areas where they do, and I just want to express the utmost appreciation for that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I just want to add some to what you mentioned, Mr. President, about, uh, the fire departments. If there is any possibility to lock them doors and see who's got garbage cans, uh, be part of that job as well, I think we can, that's definitely.
Yes, sir. We talked about it in the weed and seed meeting this morning, uh, to the problem, and that could be something that we can move forward with. Councilwoman Thomas, Councilman Bowlin, and Councilwoman Benjamin.
Um, first, I would like to send my deepest condolences out to the young lady that, uh, incident happened this weekend. Uh, my heart go out to this family because she's a mother of five, five children, and I want this city to keep this family in prayer. September month, we start, we always do, uh, we, this is our third year we have stopped the violence, the gun violence. And, uh, right now, our community is, uh, our hearts real church right now because of some, someone with a mother with five kids, uh, right now. And also, I want to say to this family that this body, the city council, we, uh, we sent our prayers out to her family. Uh, also, I would like to say, uh, I want to thank the, the group from Ward Eight, Michael Johnson, that, uh, called, took part of, uh, my, uh, asked me for help, supplies that came out and did the cleanup, Ms. Johnson, uh, they did, uh, they did a good job, they had two truckloads of debris that they had cleaned up and I supplied, uh, whatever they needed, and I want people to continue, if you need, uh, supplies, pickup sticks, bags and gloves, uh, we do, I do have them, we, we want people to work together in each ward in the community of streets, uh, what street you live on, you see you need to do a cleanup, you could call anytime and, uh, I will have the equipment with you. Also, I want to, uh, thank the, the people that came out to the meeting we had, uh, in Ward Seven, at Ward Chapel, dealing with, uh, the weed and seed, uh, and we want to have another meeting, uh, to bring out more people because of the, the crime and the break-ins and things, people are calling, asking for the number so they can call Agent Brian to talk to. And, uh, I just want to thank the people that, uh, in City of Seven by working together, you know, what we have to do for our city to keep it clean, and also, I really want to thank the people that lives in Ward Seven because you're doing an excellent job by keeping, uh, each street in the community, blocks, working together, uh, keeping the neighborhood cleaned up. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Thomas, Councilman Bowie.
I was just going to head into what Council Johnson was saying about the firefighters, it'd be great if we could come around to each ward during that time, so if, you know, my ward, you know, Friday morning, Friday, if, uh, they could be a part of, at least ride the ward at that time, they could discover other, you know, code enforcement issues, but they could look at least the trash cans maybe in the first place to kind of get the boots on the ground and get that, and then they can harvest as they go in each ward so they're focused and move along, that's what I, I see as far as getting them out.
Hopefully, you'll list from the garbage company.
Right.
And that way they can also can.
Have something to build upon.
Right, correct.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea, uh, hopefully we get this thing done relatively soon, uh, that's something we desperately need, as you know, and, um, to clean up the city quickly, so, uh, again, more boots on the ground, the better the city is.
All right, thank you, Councilman Bowlin.
Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, and you all may be noticing now, Ward Four is getting a facelift, and so I want to say, because we are on the radio tonight, we are being videotaped, and the fabulous several times journalist here, and I know he will post it, um, as we go about cutting grass and cleaning up Ward Four, I need the citizens to do the same. I could not ask you previously because the city was not doing their part, uh, and now we are. So as you see us go out and cut, pick up house, household, household garbage that shouldn't have been out in the first place, I need citizens to do that. What I'm doing now is I'm gathering my list, uh, for weed abatement, uh, if you have those twelve inches, uh, we will be turning those into the attorneys. Uh, many in Ward Four have already knocked on the door, so you know, you already know about your grass, but as you see Ward Four getting this facelift, and we've already covered the perimeter, so we're going now inside, um, Ward Four, as you see that happening, I need you to do the same thing, I need you to follow suit. Uh, now that the city is doing this and, and, and thank God the city council passed this so that we can do this, thank you city council for that. Uh, as you see us cutting grass, we need you to cut grass, as we see, as you see us picking up the trash, we need you to pick up, we need you to pick up the trash, we need you to not put it out. The ditches in Ward Four are being redone because they're back, we, we done them, uh, we did them last summer, it's time to do them again, but when you are cutting your grass, and if it's front, in front of your home, I'll have to knock on your door, grass clippings cannot go into the ditches, okay? Uh, as you can see on North Brow, those ditches are fairly new on North Brow, and piles and piles of clippings are being, uh, let out into the ditches, that's why we have some of the problems that we have now with drainage, clog ditches, those have to be bagged and taken care of as you clip your grass, please take care of it, please do not clog the ditches. I'm about to have the ditches cleaned again, so please do not do that, so again, as we go about, welcome to the Ward Four facelift, I need you to do your part so that I don't have to turn you in on the weed abatement list or any other code enforcement list.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Benjamin, Councilwoman Thomas, Saki, come on in.
Oh, yes, I would like to say this to, uh, Arby Hudson, hi, in, uh, Knox, we are asking people that are in my area there, when kids get out of school, we are asking volunteers to, you know, we have a lot of senior citizen and a lot of people be at home, when three o'clock come, we are asking people to volunteer to come out onto the streets and watch the kids as they go home, because we were, we're trying to stop the fighting, uh, so we are asking people that in my area to volunteer themselves, to come out at three o'clock and watch those, those kids go home, without any fighting, uh, in the community, from, uh, Boonton to First Avenue, people that lives in that area, uh, I'm asking them to come out and help, uh, volunteer to watch the kids.
Thank you, Councilwoman Thomas, are there any other announcements at this time? Any announcements? All right. Uh, not to specific presentation, we have Mr. Michael Petway, please come forward, you and your family. This young man has been with the city for thirty-nine years. On behalf of the City of Seven, we have a little plaque. He will be retired on, on behalf of the city, now we give up a plaque to honor him, come down, present it to him at this time.
Thirty-nine years.
Yes, it is.
Business must been dead around the place.
Been great.
Okay, uh, this award presented to Mr. Michael Petway, this award is presented to Michael Petway for your commitment and dedication to the City of Seven for thirty-nine years. All right. You've been working longer than my age. Don't, don't make me feel old, okay? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bowie. Thank you. Word, speak, speak. Yeah, I, I'd like to say, uh, thank you to all my coworkers who helped me accomplish this mission, whether you were with the cemetery, uh, with other departments up here inside the city. And I enjoy working with you guys, I appreciate everything that you did to, for me, and I would like to thank, uh, Mayor Evan Special for appointing me the superintendent over the cemetery department, and Mr. Dario Melton for keeping me the superintendent of the cemetery department. Yeah, it, it's been a hard honor, but it's been a good one, so I'd like to thank everybody for being there to support me, and I'd like to leave y'all with a few, a, a little advice. Traveler, up Dallas Avenue, I've been working for the cemetery, like I say, thirty-nine years, thirty-nine years. Every year of the thirty-nine years I've been there, someone runs into the wall. And, 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 and the reason why, there's, there's, I was told that there's a ghost be crossing the street, and the people were swirled to try to miss the ghost, and were running to the wall, so y'all be careful, traveling down, 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 you, and look at, look at.
Mr. Petway, we want to thank you for your thirty-nine years of service.
Okay.
And we hope we give us those good pleasures like you said.
We, we, we will, Miss Coon.
Council members. Council members? Yes. Uh, as the chairman of the Department of Work Health Services Committee, we have had very little involved in the cemetery because, you have been running with all the cylinders, uh, for a given, you have been a dedicated employee, you have been a person that took your job seriously, and you, and you've been a supervisor, that I just appreciate thanking, and I wish you a good, uh, right as a good retirement, I know you already got a, who said I heard about you? Just, just, just don't drink the water when you're there.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Ed, my, uh?
Mr. Petway, thank you so much. Uh, thirty-nine years for a young man is impressive, is very, very impressive, uh, you've always had the same in you, um, no matter when and no matter where we have encountered you, you're a service, uh, to the city itself and its citizens, uh, because you work in a very special area where people need, uh, the kindness that you have, and I want to thank you for that kindness, thank you, uh, to your white children for loaning you to the city of Seven for thirty-nine years, and it's almost like it was thirty-nine perfect years, I know nothing is perfect, but you, it, a job well done, and I thank you for that, I, I didn't hear your name ringing anywhere in any place, and that is impressive when you're in a body of government, that's impressive, so thank you so much for all of you.
Okay, thank you all. Thank you.
Mr. Petway, enjoy your retirement, and I know it's rare, it's early, listen, you just take a few weeks off for just any time, Lord knows.
Certainly. No time, oh.
And, Mr. Petway, thank you for all that you've put up with, uh, walking for the sleepless nights, especially over the last few years spent anyways.
Here's our farce now, the houses.
That's right.
That's good as hell, make sure he's been.
I also thank you for what you have done, uh, thank you, got up to the with Mark, I think he did the horse deal, he was there, he could hear Noah talk, and, and, and also, uh, I think he was a little boy then, just started, I think, just started with him, you know, so, uh, also, I called out there last week, and I thank Mr. Coon, gonna be a pretty good, uh, gentleman that will come step in. that will come stepping your feet, in your shoes. I called out there last week about a situation I want to talk about over there. And he came right on and did what had to do with grave out there that was shocking to all of us. And I want to thank him as well for coming out, came right on out and took care of it. That shows that you set a good example for your staff that will be there while you're gone. And you and your family, enjoy yourselves as well. Thank you for what you have done.
I got friends in West.
I'd just like to wish Mr. Petway and his family happy trails and fun time in retirement. I couldn't have had a better boss, never had a better boss in my working years than, than Mr. Petway. He let me do my job, I let him do his too. But we've had a good time together. I hope he's trained, I think he's trained me very well, and I want to be responsive to, to the community as he has. And he's not going to take any time off. He's put a group together that's going to be out at Lorenzo Harrison Cemetery Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday.
Thursday, and they're going to start cutting grass.
The new work.
All right.
Thank you. Get up, get up, hold on.
Okay. All right, good luck, gentlemen.
To the citizens of course, Mr. Wyatt Green. Mr. Green, okay, I just. All right, to the, by that truck, Mr. Wade.
Getting the council, getting the citizens. Is that the Wyatt Green?
Mr. Wade, you should mark this way. We go ahead and do Wyatt Green, then still the first one. Bring it back up. Hi, Mr. Wyatt Green. Ten couple of cars.
Good afternoon, Mr. Green.
Good afternoon.
I want to thank you all for allowing us to come and actually speak. This is a great day, we consider it a great day for the city of Selma and for our county people. We started this pilot project and the vision, and the conversations that we were having about technology. And something that started probably about a year or so ago. And in the process of that, the city of Tuskegee invited us to do a coding class. And in the process of doing the coding, thinking about doing the coding class in the city of Tuskegee, my right-hand person, Mr. Cheryl Peddery-Carlin, we had a discussion, why would we start in Tuskegee when we live here in Selma? So what came out of the vision, and as the mayor was saying, we needed to do this because of some of the technology initiatives that we have actually been talking about with young people. And we had, I had the opportunity to read, to read something that really spurred me to say, we need to do this right now. And it says that people make choices, and choices make history. And what we decided to do was to invest in younger people here within the city of Selma. We started out with, I think it was 19, right Cheryl?
Yes, 19.
We started out with 19, with the youngest being 10, and the oldest being Stephen, 16 under 20. And what we did, after we started the class, we quickly began to realize, we came to teach them, but they began to teach us. So we realized what it was going to take in order to provide them a choice so that their future could actually be secured. Now, what I would like to do is, I don't want to draw the speaker here, but what I would like to do is to introduce you all to everyone, and, and.
My name is Rachel Hurst.
My name is Arjuna.
My name is Paul.
My name is Stephen.
My name is Violet.
And my name is Cheryl Pedderway-Carlin.
Cheryl has three days. Over, over the course of about six weeks, what we've done is we tried to introduce them to technology as well as coding. And some of those that are here, some will be engineers, some will be programmers. But there's a couple of young men that will run their own businesses in the future. And there will be those support people that are actually there. And what we tried to do was to get them to embrace the concept of technology and our future. And we had a wonderful time. We had a lot of fun. We did a lot of great things. What's going to come out of this is that what you're seeing out of these going here now, we're going to select three to four, and we're going to, they're going to be mentored by us for one year. When we're in meetings with our clients, they're going to be in meetings with those clients. And those that are more marketing, they're going to be with the marketing people, the engineers, we've been working with the engineers. During their breaks, they will be, they will be interning with us. So what we're trying to do is establish a foundation to where they have the choice, and that choice they make will determine what happens in their future. And we're really excited about this opportunity. And what we're planning on for next summer, we will have our camp next summer also. And those that participate for the full year, they will be trainers, and we will be utilizing them to train the other young men and young women that are actually going to be coming through the program. We are, we have developed a website, and it's going to be maintained by them. And from that website, they are going to be maintaining a technological newsletter for the technology that's being deployed in their age group, in the city of Selma, and, and all around us. That site is, it's not out yet, but it will be open in the next few days. We'll be highlighting all of them, their accomplishments, and what their aspirations are for the future. And I truly want to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to speak to you together. And I want to thank the mayor for, you know, his vision for saying, Mr. Green, this is what we actually need to do. And I want to thank, um, I forgot. Ms. Terry, because she gave up her weekends, every weekend, to actually open up for us so that we could actually use some of the facilities at times. So I want to thank her for that. And I just want to thank all of you for everything that you all have been doing in the city, and for giving us the opportunity to, uh, speak to you all this afternoon.
Is that a question?
Yes.
Of the camp, uh, the camp that you had?
Yes.
Uh, where was the camp at?
It was in various places.
You was in various places?
Yes. We started out at the library.
At the library?
Yes. And from the library, we had, I think, three sessions at the Forum Nights.
Will, will there, at that time, will there be other opportunities for other kids to be in this program?
Yes.
So you just really just, basically got it off the ground.
Right, this, this was a pilot project for us. And what we actually did is, we actually advertised in the several-time journal, and our very first session, we had close to 20 students that were actually there. Now, what we would like to do is have this as an ongoing program through the year. And it needs to be, it's not something that you can touch for six weeks out of the summer and expect it to be effective. So that's why we're saying that we're going to, this is going to be a continuous thing, and they're going to be involved with us for this whole year. But we want this to be something that's totally continuous, so that every quarter, we'll be offering this program for students that actually come in.
So you will have it open for other students?
It's for everybody. It's everybody.
Okay, so you have where they'll be able to, when your next quarter starts, and someone is interested in their job, the program, I think you were saying, it sounds like a good, interesting program, and a lot of kids like to work with.
Yes.
Technology.
Yes.
A lot of kids. And, you know, we have, we have other kids out here would, would like to be, have an opportunity to be a part of this program.
So here's the way what's happening now, is we have partnered with the Selma, with the Selma City Schools, and they have offered RB Hudson, because that's their techni, that's going to be our technology center. And we have, we've, we've spoke with the superintendent, and we're actually one of the partners that's working and developing that curric, that technology program there. And additionally, we, probably within the next six months, six to seven months, will be opening what we're calling, right in line with the school district, a center of excellence where students can come after school, we're going to put up about, it's going to be our training center, about 24 machines, and we're going to offer technology to all of the kids, anybody that comes at no cost.
Okay. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Green, and with that code, it go in and out of the scene, fine technology.
It really does. And the thing that people are understanding, that code is everywhere. When I come in, I turn the light on, that's a code. You speaking, me listening, and I'm speaking, that's a code. So they, they are users of the technology, but they are not developers of it. So what we're trying to do is get our kids interested in being the developers and not just the users. Because when they start being the developers, it begins to impact their life, their livelihood, their family, and the generations to come.
Thank you. Um, I think this is great. Let me ask you this. Do, do you foresee having something for people like me? I'm 62 years old, and when computers started coming around, my brain was already, my, I wasn't in school, when I was in school, it was reading, writing, arithmetic. Computers weren't even thought about, you know, and that kind of thing.
Yeah, Petway, come on. We already have something in place, and I.
One of the things that we have.
I have you. I know, I know you.
One of the things that we have in place is a group called Youth.
Talking to the market.
Excuse me. Youth and Technology for Elders. So as we train the youth, one of the things that we're getting them to do is also begin to train the elders. And so we already have that in place.
That's awesome. Well, let me know outside of.
Not certain enough. And the other thing that Mr. Green had mentioned is that, as you see, each one of them has on a Bridge to the Future shirt or something pertaining to the city of Selma. And so on the website, they will be modeling these shirts so that we can sell all over the world.
That's fantastic.
Any other questions, council? Thank you, Mr. Wade. For all of your questions, Mr. Wade, thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Wade.
Let me start off by giving you the revenue report for the month, the month ending in July 31st. Sales tax revenue was reported at 885,424. That's up by, from the previous year by 85,262. Lodging tax was 28,935. That's up by 3,314 from the previous year. Tobacco tax was 23,600. That's up by 2,607 from the previous year. YNCA was, um, lodging tax surcharge for YNCA was 7,410. That's up by 5,762 from the previous year. Passes sales tax was 110,678 collected. That's up by 10,657 from the previous year. Simplified seller's use tax was up by 31,000. Total for July was 42,967.
That's, that comes in on a monthly basis, I guess.
Right. Any questions regarding the revenue?
We just went back to, um, volume.
Okay.
I don't get it, I don't get it from someone. And just repeat that one.
Okay. Lodging tax is for the month of July was 28,935, up by 3,314 in comparison to FY 2018 for the same month.
Are you surprised that number, um, in comparison to, to the other night, we were, um, told that we were completely booked again, and we keep becoming completely booked? And but the numbers are just not representative of being completely booked.
Um, I would agree with you. However, in terms of compliance and ensuring that there's someone that's checking that and doing audits, we can request audits, but that's the number that they keep coming up with, and we can request another audit just to verify that.
And, and are you speaking a random audit for somebody else?
Right.
Would you request again that we do random audits, um, for the lodging tax, please?
I'll, I'll put all of them, I'll just request for all of them too.
Okay, yes.
All right. You know, of course, and, Councilman, you are here, must be listening to the restitution that's being paid. I had asked you sometime, we go to find what is the balance of these payments that are being paid.
And I, I did send that request to our attorney, but he hasn't gotten back with me on the information yet.
Could you give them a second?
Yeah, I, I'll follow up that.
Councilman. Ms. Wade?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question to ask you. With the report that you give us, our monthly report, does that report give us, uh, the other finance that is coming in through the tax collector from the other departments, like from this?
Um, now, when we're, we're talking about dealing with these revenues in specific, this comes through add-in. So the answer to this is no, when you talk about the lodging, the simplified, we get those directly from our collector, okay? When we look at the budget performance report, then that's inclusive, that includes the sales tax, and that includes tax revenue from building rooms and all those different areas that come through other avenues. So if you look at this report that's called Budget Performance Report 2 of 5, that information can hear from the Tax and License Office.
Councilman Thompson?
You can go ahead, I, I'll come back to it, I wanted to ask you.
The simplified seller's tax, oh, wait, wait, now, that'd be, that'd get off the.
Online shopping?
Online shopping.
Yes, sir.
Councilmembers, Councilman, Councilman.
And let me correct, that comes through state.
Okay. Who's state, how it is?
Alabama, state of Alabama.
State of Georgia, some files, correct? State. Councilman Jackson?
I'm looking at the payment register on the second page, two of seven. Is that our, our, for?
It is.
Okay, we've paid them $30,000 this past month. How much have you paid them total?
I think, from my understanding, that's the first payment since I've been back. I think we just made our first payment. When I got, when I came back, I was understanding they were like 85%. When I got, when I came back, I was understanding they were like eighty-five percent. Is, is that what you all were told, that they were almost eighty-five percent complete? Um, but, uh, we talked about three months later and it's still not. I haven't, um, usually, towards the end when we're about to finalize it, I get a draft copy of the financial statement. And I completed management discussion and analysis, but we haven't got back to that point. I was told that we would get it, um, last week, so hopefully, we'll have it by the end of this week.
So, they haven't given us five years, but then we paid them thirty thousand, that's all we paid them all year. We're not sure if we're going to have to pay them one hundred thousand.
Oh, oh, yes.
You know, I-
I don't know, I don't have the information in terms of what the contractual agreement was, that's in the mayor's office. But I do know that it's in at least a hundred thousand.
Yeah, um, Treasury, do you mind asking for a com, copy of that contractual agreement? I think it's in the interest of the council to know how much we're paying for an audit that we haven't received yet.
I can.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes, uh, President Bowie.
Yes, ma'am.
We have, uh, we have our clerk, we have our treasurer, also we have our chief, uh, here too in the body. But we have another department that, um-
She will start second, uh, meeting under my, Ms. Wade will do the first, and, uh, Ms. Lewis will have the second.
Thank you.
Okay. On the second, Councilwoman.
Did you ever follow up on our RFPs with the head attorney clerk?
We need, we need to move forward with it.
Yes, sir, I, I followed up several times, uh, that's, um, left with our attorney. Uh, President Bowie can, can explain to delay, but, uh, the attorney is supposed to get with the clerk, uh, this week or the beginning of next week. My definition is what he last stated, uh, to get, get it out.
Well, basically, we have to, uh, the deal, the process, and also the state, uh, must work with the state, one of the sheriff. And it should be out, uh, Monday or Tuesday next week, Ms. Sheriff.
He said that he would try, um, to have a pair next week.
Okay, I would really, I would definitely make sure that he's had our money.
That's the only reason we could, because we had this company. I think about Wisconsin and Minnesota, this way.
Minnesota.
Minnesota, we, we, we had them on hold for quite some time. And I do know we need to follow the procedures, we must, I must stick with the procedures. But the fact is is that I've been over there a long time, we need to go in and put that place, because the money can be available for us to put this initiative in place. This would give us a clear, uh, once this is completed, we will know exactly what our assets are. Right now, we don't. And, uh, we need to, uh, get this in place so that we can know when we spend money for year to year, whether that, whatever, the spend with that money is going to be.
Now, hopefully, we can move through. We will, yeah. Also, help to test what the audit is about.
Okay, so, how, um, look, if you take a look at the budget report, performance report that you have before you on page five, um, at the very top, there's, um, year two data transaction in terms of revenue, um, and which reflects fourteen million seven ninety-two, three fifty-one. Um, we're at eighty-three percent of our projected budgeted amount of seventeen million, seven fifty-three, three fifty-two, which is very good. We only have this is, uh, we have August and September, two months remaining, so, um, we're in a very good place in terms of, uh, meeting at least our projected goal, um, in terms of revenue receipts.
Would you say that into the microphone, please?
We, um, the fourteen million, seven ninety-two, three fifty-one is what we reflect as receiving and, um, revenue today. We projected seventeen million, seven fifty-three, three fifty-two. We're at eighty-three percent of revenue receipts, which is very good, considering that we have two months remaining, which is likely that we'll exceed that projection. Maybe not a whole lot, but enough to say we at least met that projection, so that's a good sign. Council, you did a good job.
One nation, one country.
Councilwoman Silver.
And I want to, Ms. Wade, this is without our, some of our money, our new revenue of building rentals that we're managing. That really goes on.
That's correct, you are absolutely correct. Not just, um, the building rent, sports complex was down, there were a lot of things that didn't happen. Yet, um, revenues, as I, I think I discussed with some of you all, we have, we have probably about over a hundred thousand dollars outstanding from the state that we have not received for a miracle, so we just pay what comes, that's a good sign. So those, we have some revenues that we can assist that kind of need to, um, yeah, you're correct. So, on page thirty-three of the budget performance report, um, at the bottom, maybe, that's the last page of this one. When you look at, um, the total, no, I'm sorry, let me go back, because that's all the comments. Let's go back to the general, look at that more specifically. So let's go to page eighteen. I mean, a budget for calendar report, that's what the total expense for the calendar report is. Total general fund year-to-date, and that's of July thirty-first. It's eleven billion, eight oh seven, seven fifty, point zero seven. And, and that shows that we're, it's reflected that over the total amount budget, uh, we all have spent sixty-seven percent. And that is way below the anticipated, um, sixty-seven percent. You should be around at eighty percent. Usually, in previous years, we've normally spent over and then spent into, um, what we have into reserves for grant match, for grant money that's, that's coming in. But, right now, we are at sixty-seven percent, uh, expenditures for the year. So, um, we're in a good place financially, we look sound and healthy.
Quick question, Councilwoman. What do you predict of our revenues for the year?
That, I mean, that would be sale tax, was it ten million or less?
Ten, ten million.
Two ten million?
Like ten point eight if I'm not mistaken.
And average loan was about four?
Um, yeah, about, um, I think it's somewhere like three.
First, and then the other, next thing is taxes, did we receive nothing?
Tax, other, and other, Mr. Wayne is revenue business, of course you have the business license.
That's about what, two million?
Yeah, two million.
Right at three.
Right.
And the sales tax makes up about fifty-eight percent of the budget.
It is, it's about that.
Any other, is there any other questions for Ms. Wade? Any other question?
I have another question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
With this bill that Congresswoman, uh, Terry Sue is pushing, co-responsible by Representative Tom E. on New York, this infrastructure bill, that hopefully will pass Congress and get consented. If our city is able to target to that, I'm just asking, asking hypothetical question. And let's say, we already know it takes, had to work for twenty-five million, two thirty million to repay Bay Street and Selma, which Bay Street and Selma need to be made. And of course, some other infrastructure need. Let's say that we are able to apply to get, let's say, twenty-six million. Will, we, are we able, we pay twenty-six million with current revenues, annual revenues coming in from the city, such as sale tax, average loan?
That, that didn't last part of what I was asking, quite easily.
If we're able to get bond money.
Right.
You know, with that deal, it, it increases the dollar amount from ten million to thirty million to the city or any institution to borrow. Let's say we are going to a lending source to get enough money to refurbish and reclaim Bay Street and the city of Selma. How will we repay that?
Okay, so, let, let, let's go back to the first thing you said about, um, Congresswoman Sue giving us, um, get, provide that bill is passed and we'd be awarded about twenty-five million?
The deal is being passed nationwide.
Nationwide.
For community, city, cell. Then tap in and borrow money to the infrastructure needs.
Okay.
Pay the streets, clubs, schools. Self borrowing is primarily streets.
Okay.
Because our goals is identity, and estate of our city.
Right.
And I think it is, and still can attest that the street will be repaid. Uh, if we're able to get resources, let's say we go to a lending institution, we have already, uh, yeah, there is already given us total outreach for the streets to be paid, let's say twenty-five million. We go to a lending, lending institution to pay the money, twenty-five million, how will we keep doing that? That's, that's the question.
Okay, so all of that is contingent on how this award is set up. How, if it's a bond, whether or not it's a warrant, I'm not, um, I, I don't know the details of how it's going to be established.
Assuming bond.
What, what, just assuming that it's a bond, or, uh, so, which means that we can repay with bond through certain money that's outside to pay bonds, right? But if it's a warrant, we have to pay from our general fund, so we, we would have to rely on the general fund. But we have certain amount of money that go in for the bond, we would be able to pay directly through that way. Um, but it goes back with the conversation that I had with you earlier about maintaining our credit score, our debt-to-asset ratio, making sure we keep a track of how much we have outstanding in debt and what our legal debt margin is, because we are borrowing over here, we're borrowing over here. Once the, finding, once the audit is released, we'll know now what our legal debt limit is, what we're able to borrow now, so we can't exceed that. If there is way around, it's usually going through some type of authority, just like you have, uh, the public building authority for that, I don't know if that's- Right, okay, so I don't know if there's a authority that's going to be set up for that. So all of those are contingent on the legal background of it. But if it is for a bond, we have funds, we have money that comes in that could cover those costs. And when you're talking about the general fund, you have something totally different. So we have to look at a, a number of things to make that decision.
I, I, I would go rather say our national delegation is pushing for bills that's going to be able to help us. Uh, I was informed by, uh, the Seminole Times Journal, uh, Admiral here at, uh, Senator Tom, uh, Tom Jones, Doug Jones, is also supporting the infrastructure need. So resources, hopefully, can be built through the state, and these resources are made available. I think we need to be able to tap into it to get what we need to fix ourselves.
I, I completely agree with you, and then also, let's always keep in mind that when you have infrastructure proj, projects, they don't happen within a year. They usually over a long period of time, like you all had the ten, two thousand nine, Build America Bond, and I wasn't here, but it was over, it had to be done. You borrowed that money, it's supposed to be completed over a certain length of time. So, when you're considering those projects and you have to budget for what you have to pay for, you look at the length of the project and how much you're anticipating spending over that period of time to make your budget decision. And that may be something where we start to look at budget projections over a two to five-year period, and then come back and tweak them during the budget season.
I agree with you, I would accept, so, we need, we need to close, twenty twenty, I would go to our office. But we just need to go through the, the, uh, alternative, the alternative resources, and if they're already pre, then pre-approve. And as you said, please, we need to make this happen, so we need to set something in place so we can, after this, this, this money that we need, this is our city.
And, and perhaps we'll, we can get an expert coming in, a, uh, investment banker or something that can look at that and just talk about, look at our current debt structure and talk about what we need to do. And as we've discussed, uh, um, it's important that we work on building, making sure we, um, build our credit bank up, because our credit has experienced a downgrade, so we want to work hard in building that bank up.
Any other questions for Ms. Wade? Thank you. Also, I would like to bring on, uh, Chief, Chief Green, uh, anything you would like to run for?
Ms. Lewis, you have a question?
Anybody have any questions for Chief Green? Any questions? Councilwoman? No questions?
She said no.
No.
I, I don't have it.
Okay, all right, moving on.
All right. Mr. President, thank you for the floor. I'd like to recognize, uh, the T and A E. I have watched these young people, not in person, but virtually, in the virtual world, I kept seeing T and A E, T and A E, and you all were everywhere, in the newspaper, on the radio, uh, you went to, I don't know if you called it a showdown or a shutdown, but it was in Florida. And, uh, you came back, the prevailing, you, you won the championship. But there, there are more than, well, there's two teams, okay? And these are young girls, I think between the, uh, the grades of four and nine. I'm going to bring this lady, Hasbury, uh, who knows a whole lot more than I, uh, but, but I felt that we needed to recognize our champions. These are young people who are in our, our city schools, uh, and they have been grinding, grinding, grinding. They could have been doing anything else over the summer, but they chose to play ball. And not only did they play ball, they worked hard and they were competitive, and they came back the champions. And, and hey, let me just say, you're girls, and they are girls. And so, if, Ms. Hasbury, if you would come on up and let's introduce the team. Espoir. And, and as long as she and I have been communicating, and she's all moving up tonight, even tell me she was letting Hasbury Espoir.
I've been in front.
Not yet. She working on Councilwoman.
But she lives here.
Yeah.
So here is Espoir.
Uh, but beyond that, she's here today, uh, for, I invited them all here, and I'm glad that she said yes to me, uh. Let's get her just, is she okay?
She good.
She is, okay, and that is for the purpose of the radio, so that you can speak into it, we have people listening on radio, so that's what that is for, the microphone is for. And if you would, um, tell us a little bit about T and A E and, uh, what they are about and what happened over the summer.
Would you like the girls to come up?
Anytime you get ready for them, if you want to go ahead and tell us about them personally, they bring up.
Okay, well, um, T and A E Basketball Club has been in existence for about nine years. Uh, we have teams in Selma, uh, Tuscaloosa, Montgomery. We have two, three girls, the elementary, middle school, and a high school girl team. All the girls are, um, participants in the Black Bay area, so they're not just from one school, they're from all over. And like you stated, uh, from fourth to probably the tenth grade. Um, like I said, some of the girls are here today if you have to stand up or come forward so they can see who you are. Um, they participated in several tournaments over the summer, and they won, uh, they played in quite a few of them. The last one, the elementary girls, won the championship in Pensacola, Florida. And the middle school girls played twice, they won in Selma, they won in Wilcox, and they have their- And we just want to thank the Councilwoman, she went to the four dollars to meet us, so the girls can be recognized up in Selma. And if anyone would like to sponsor us in the future, contact me, we can take all the nations.
And she was hard at sponsorship, she just, she doesn't just ask for money, they grind out in the city, they go out and to get the money. They work hard on their fundraising, and I appreciate that. I don't think they've ever been to the council to ask us for money, but if you see them out there, give to their fundraisers, uh, become, uh, you have to, let it out. Okay, okay, so they need to get to us, the left need to get to us, give me one, say that perfectly. But if you see them out, become a sponsor or donate to us, and you all are doing great things, so let's do this, okay? So the paper is here, the paper reports good things about our young people. Let's turn this way so the paper can get a picture, and we can report these good things that are going on with our young people. Come on down. Did you bring your championship rings?
Yeah.
I see, put those, put those rings in the picture, make sure you show your ring. There you go.
To her, okay.
So here's her.
Ms. Ellen, please, can you get me a picture, please?
And brag on these young ones. I appreciate it.
Yeah, okay, so say your names.
Name and grade. They probably glad I'm retired.
And tell us what's the other problem?
We have, uh, Melinda Olds, she's in the seventh grade at Arby Hudson. We have Shania Moore, she's in the seventh grade at Keith Middle. We have Tamaya Richardson, she's in the fifth grade at Keith Elementary. State, I'm sorry. We have Fantasia Andrews, she's in the tenth grade at Southside High School. We have Jayden Dixon, she's in the sixth grade at Van Durant. We have Makaiya Holman, she's in the seventh grade at Tipton. We have Jerkaya Moore, she's in the seventh grade at Keith. We have Kendrick Book, she's in the sixth grade at Van Durant. We have Khalil Dunson, she's in the ninth grade at Southside.
And why?
Edwards, she's in the eighth grade at Tipton.
And we please get your parents and grandparents and friends who came to support these young people to please stay. Thank you for all the giving and stuff that they're doing in the county. A lot of the, uh, you know, it takes a lot to, 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 to drive your kids around, to follow them to Florida, to, to bring decorate and snacks, I go all by the, hey, meat pads and Band-Aids and first aid kits. It takes a lot of all this, so thank you all for doing that and not, and not mining your young people to do something productive, uh, in our city. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you from Councilwoman Benjamin for the invitation. Now to the committee reports, uh, and closing remarks. Recreation Committee, Councilman Jones?
Uh, just gonna say, uh, the football season is about to get started. Uh, if the hand sign kid up to play football, uh, please do so. Uh, Terry Jackson is at the stadium to get it done. I think it, they pretty much already got to take care. Uh, but the Recreation Department is open, the football season is about to get started. And also, I did announce earlier, we will have a fishing tournament at E7 Fish Pond on August 7th. Uh, we have about three or four different characters, uh, and it starts at seven in the morning, it goes to twelve noon, it's so hot. But, uh, anybody that's gonna come fishing in a fishing tournament, uh, please do, uh, at E7, uh, Fish Pond. But again, I wanna thank everybody that's been in water, uh, for cleaning up, cutting grass, all the volunteers, all the ones who got on contract, I just wanna thank everybody, and good night, City of Selma.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Minutes of Development, Councilwoman Ellen.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I'm so happy to see the Selma Mall was in the business. I was out, uh, at the bank event the other day, and I saw cars at the mall, and it was just such a welcome sight. And Ms. Wade, I'm expecting our numbers, sales tax numbers, to be going up, seeing all these folks going out there shopping. Um, and it just seems like there's a little lilt in the mood in the community, that, that's such a welcome thing to see. I wanted to announce also, on August twenty-seventh at Arch survive, at five-thirty, Design Alabama is going to be there. The Selma Redevelopment Authority and Arch survive are partnering to have Design Alabama here. And they want to hear ideas from people, uh, about, uh, development in Selma, what we'd like to see. And I think it's particularly in the downtown area as we, uh, strive to, to, uh, carry on with redevelopment. One of the things, and, and I hope, I'm gonna be sending something to the mayor, a request, along with my other requests, Mr. President, but I'm going to be requesting, uh, Mr. Thompson through the mayor. We have had some studies done in the past. We've had master designs done, we've had studies done by big, um, engineering firms that, that we've got grants for, we've spent a lot of money on. And I would like to get copies of, I've already gotten the master plan, but I need to have these other designs dug up so that we can take them with us. I think that that would help curtail a lot of the heavy lifting for the, they're bringing, Design Alabama is bringing, um, architects and designers and all those folks to come, so, so I'd like to, if you could help me maybe facilitate that, Mr. President, um, if we could get those, uh, designs, previous designs. Um, also, I wanted to, oh, I have to mention this, Councilwoman Jackson and Councilwoman Benjamin, and Councilwoman Johnson. I got taken to the woodshed about our policy that I voted on too, um, for the, uh, for, for your side of Water Avenue. Uh, because I was reminded that the, um, from some old timers, that the whole Water Avenue through the organization movement was begun with Riverfront Market Day, and vendors coming and cooking and that sort of thing. And so I was asked to pass along, for us, a request was made for us to revisit that and see if we could look at something else, so I am passing that along. So, um, I, I now, I've had several years ago, this had always been an issue with, when there would be festivals there. And I remember at one point I had gotten the, the name of a company that does grease receptacles and giving it to Mr. Waller when he came to the league, but that fell on deaf ears. So, but that's, that's something, that, that's something to talk about, you know, with the committee. But I'm just merely passing along something that was brought, that I was asked to mention, so I am mentioning it. Um, also, um, Councilwoman Thomas and I today talked about the Welcome Center and that we would like to discuss having, you know, having a Welcome Center open at times when, when it, it'll be headed with tourism. And with Labor Day coming, I'd like to visit the possibility of maybe having contract workers on weekends. Um, so that's something that, that will be having a community development meeting within, you know, pretty short months. So it'll be a short notice meeting to discuss that. So just, just for council members to have that in your thinking cap. And, uh, I have no remarks, but, um, thank you.
Yes, I do want to respond. Um, there's some kind of misinformation and miscommunication regarding the, um, proposal that came back for the Jubilee. This was a one-year contract for one event. And at that time, we stated this is for the twenty nineteen Jubilee. And so anything outside of the twenty nineteen Jubilee need to be looked at just as everything else. If you read the meeting, meeting minutes, there was nothing that substantiated forever and always anything. And so, um, because we stated that on last evening that we were tabling until the next meeting, I didn't provide you all a copy of those meeting minutes, but this was not about a forever always agreement. It was about one event for one year.
Let, let me, well, there is a, a general misunderstanding. Well, the paper guy's already gone, you know. And, and, and I'm not gonna, I'm not going to, that's your committee, so I'm not going to try to straighten that out in the paper, which is mentioned to me by someone who knows me, and I used, I used to be the publicity and entertainment chairman for Marketing Day. So that's why they call me. Uh, but, and you understand those connections.
I, I do.
But, but I think that, that, and you know how when somebody says, somebody says, and I don't like the way somebody says you. But anyway, just, and, and I, I think, and, and I had understood it to be that, that it's not gonna be any, we're not gonna cook on that side anymore, so. But that's just, and, and again, that's, that's committee made the thing, I just was, um...
Yes, ma'am, and I'll make sure that we have the meeting minutes. I don't think we addressed overall, I think that it came to the committee by way of not wanting to address the, the soil and the, the blocks there. Um, but this was about one event, and so we focused on one event. Um, the contract that, um, committed that I was on was a not award three committee to remove entertainment from that side. It was actually a Jubilee committee that was, um, that Councilwoman Benjamin, Council President, Council President and, um, Councilwoman Michael Johnson were all a part of that committee. So this was just one event, but we'll discuss that at the next work session and make sure that we clear up any misinformation because this is about one event. But we wanna make sure that when we're, we're doing one event, that we're providing the same services for all events. We wanna, we wanna be, we wanna be fair across the board. And so that was my apprehension on last night to say, hold on, we're gonna, we said, it was a one year. It was one year, one event, and so we're gonna hold this, this, um, Jubilee twenty nineteen to this event. Then we, it should be for one year, it should be from January to December. Those are my thoughts, that's not what the committee said, nor neither is what we agreed on, and so we'll address it. At the apartment.
Alright, Councilwoman Benjamin, then move on to the cafeteria.
Let me just give a friendly reminder because I, I knew that this was coming, I just didn't know when and from who. But when you made your announcement last night, I, I figured that someone would give you a call and someone would want to talk about this. But let me give a friendly reminder, uh, to all of us. Uh, the entertainment district begins at Arch survive and it ends at the Old Depot Museum. What happens in the enter- entertainment district is sometimes businesses get caught up in that district. You get caught up in, I said this before, so it's nothing new to you all, but I'm, I'm giving you a friendly reminder that the district itself includes both sides. The district begins at Arch survive, or, or in reverse, however you wanna look at it, Arch survive to the Old Depot Museum. That is the entertainment district. And so, and, and discussions, remember, because, uh, we had Councilwoman Johnson, uh, a, a bit perturbed by that. But my thing was, I thought that the two council members were kind of in agreement. I know that you were absolutely, I know, I thought you were kinda in agreement about the whole thing and, and it didn't bother anyone, but I knew there was, I knew that it would come up. I knew that it would come up about, uh, the one side versus the other side of, uh, the district. And I, I just didn't know when, so it, it, it will make a good conversation, and I mean, that coming, and everybody will come to, uh, that place and the road in the middle, where everybody will, uh, be satisfied.
Just a reminder, we have a huge amphitheater, big, big amphitheater down there?
Yes.
So I don't know why we need to use streets really at all, it did draw attention, there has been development down there. It's called the Amphitheater Riverfront Park. I don't know why we let anybody have access to the streets, just go build it out of the park. It's absolutely made of.
We have it in the street because it's the district.
I don't need an explanation for that.
You, you don't need it, but...
I don't need an explanation.
Um, we have it in the street because it's the entertainment district of Arch survive.
I know that.
From Arch survive to the Old Depot Museum, the street. The street. And that brings in new revenue that we're trying to develop. Remind people that we have a district that is friendly to them. Anybody searching for anything when they're, they're booking hotel, wanna know what the nightlife looks like.
Hmm, alright. The most affected committee, Councilwoman Ellen.
No reports, no, no, no.
No votes in the house?
Not, not right now.
Uh, Public Safety Committee, Public Safety Committee will be meeting here tomorrow at four o'clock to review the applications for the faculty at four o'clock, along with committee members at four o'clock here in the council chamber.
To review the application for, for...
For faculty.
Alright, Public Affairs, General Services.
No, no, so, there's no reporters, the chair, however I do it, I do want to commend, uh, State Director, Mr. Stephen Hendricks, and the limited staff that he has, uh, doing the business of the city. You know, I see the trash trucks running on schedule, I see them picking up, and all of our people are supposed to be on schedule. But what still is a problem is this habitual dumping of our citizens. And it's not gonna get any better until we start enforcing our orders. Orders that have been on the books for quite some time, long before we get a bus. We have to, uh, encourage our citizens, when you see something, to say something. When you see habitual dump, dump, don't say that, did I write that down? Call me, or call me, call any council president, let him know on this date, this time, this week, you sold this car, this truck, uh, tagged on, on any council or college, and we just send it out. And the only time and thing that will get better is when people get involved. And as my colleagues, uh, talking the same way, I'm just saying, when you see a person walking down the street at two o'clock in the morning with fifty-five inches on the shoulder, it was weird, couldn't go on. Then I couldn't resist by nine thirty-seven, and we, and we, we performed a call to tell them the same. And the same has got to take me all the way. Uh, my closing remark is, we need to get our city cleaned up. I'm gonna continue to shout and say it until it is realized by my colleagues and I and everyone in the city. The people expect us to be better than what we've been doing. I know I have some time to serve to say, there's very few things we can do, and I do. And I, and I really think we're in a desperate camp with what we got. The hands that we have been dealt with in a desperate camp with what we got, and then I can tell you, future may have won it. Still, we're falling short of the expectation of the people that elected us to serve the people. Expecting our to serve us, and, 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 and this comes upon us together, Matt. And until that is been received out there, they're gonna continue to hold us responsible. That they said, I just wanna thank you everybody for, Congress, the council, or, or the list of ordinance, or, every HDB, and just getting involved in the job there. And I can assure you, once you get involved, then your elected official will become more responsible, and it's a mission.
Alright, thank you.
Just over four, you can pass this.
Alright, thank you, Councilwoman George. Uh, Councilwoman Jackson, children and family.
Good afternoon, citizen, evening, citizens of Wardville. Um, I don't have a children's and family report, counsel, but I do want to say to the citizens that I have concluded my summer six-thirty to eight-thirty, um, AM cleanup. I wanna thank Councilwoman Thomas for being at every one, and so many of my constituents for coming out from six-thirty AM to eight-thirty AM to help us clean before it got too hot. I also like to thank Ms. Jolie Jackson for getting up in her summer mornings at five o'clock to assist me in this project. Um, I want to make you all aware that on this past Saturday, um, I miss my big partner here in, in training, but I was at the legal municipalities training at the, um, Lee Building in Montgomery, Alabama from eight forty-five AM to three PM, getting additional information, learning additional skills and information, so I can come back and be a more responsible representative for each of you. And so, we have concluded, thanks, we have started, but we will continue to do our Ward Three cleanup on the third, third Saturday of each month. Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Public Building Committee, Councilwoman Jane, uh...
Uh, President Goody, for, um, you did include my, um, considered agenda about the Selma quarterback court.
I thought you were gonna make a recommendation.
I would like to make a recommendation to put a vote on the floor, a motion.
Okay, the motion was to put a vote on the floor to revert back to the original cause of, that was charging for the building, is that, that's correct?
For all.
For all, for all, for, for everyone, okay.
Player one.
Okay, player one, okay, right, motion on the floor by Councilwoman Thomas, uh...
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Jackson, is there any further discussion?
We need to put a name on that.
Affected.
Get back.
Affected.
As I said, in our work session, there's gonna be some people that have been catching, uh, new rights, now with the red match, the old price, now they're gonna be feel like they're even children.
Okay.
And, uh, rightfully so. And I, I, I think that we need the money. I think that our building use cost should be and remain steadfast as to what it is. We shouldn't, we shouldn't not retrieve that, you know? I know money is tight for, they remind it, it's tight for the city. So I think it's gonna be a problem, you know?
May I speak?
Sorry, Councilwoman.
I'm the chairperson of the committee, and the reason why I say that is...
I'm the chairperson of the committee. And the reason why I say that is we put, we charge a fee that we have no, no employees in neither one of these facilities that the citizen rents from us. And we even put in a contract where we had to, they had to get insurance, they had to get their own health, they had to pay for their own security, they have to pay for if they come in to get it cleaned up, the breaking down of the whole works. Now, we had something happen to, this council had something happen to them that we did not agree to. We did not vote on, we voted on the contract, but we did not vote on the increase. We did not vote on the inscrip, I know this for fact. This was given, this was given out by the mayor. That was his. And it was given out to the department head at the Performing Arts. We never did make that decision on how the buildings were to be increased, because we know the situation that this day-to-day operation is in. We know that we don't have employees that, people are renting these buildings and the things that need to be taken care of. They have to do all of this. There's a fee on everything that they are doing to take care of an event which they're having. If they have an event, they got to make sure that that building is clean, which we, we know that since November, that building has not been cleaned. It will be one year that there has not been, coming up November, be one year that we have not had any city employees working here. We want to be fair to the people, but we don't want the people to feel like that we, we put all of the pay, we put in the pay. But we're not, they got to do all the work. They have to do all the work. They have to have somebody clean it up, they have to have somebody set it up, and they have to, it's a fee to everything that they're doing. They're coming out of their pocket, coming out with more than what we charged for the bill.
That is another problem. If it is, as my colleague said, this council never voted on it, yet we're charging those citizens the price that was jacked up, then we're still caught between a rock and a hard place. I would highly recommend we table this in a recent minutes, find out exactly what we did, and everything's on that, and make it and tell the city.
Hello, hello. Councilwoman Jackson, then I go to Councilwoman Thomas.
Yeah, I want to speak. The reason why I speak, because when I'm a part of something in a committee, strong committee person, that's, I bring everything before this body of this council. When we do something, whatever decision, we had this meeting. We even changed some language in their contract. You know, sometimes you have to do things right, and some things have not been done right. It's just like that we did the contract, and it was like that we were overlooked as leaders. The contract that we did never made it to the Performing Arts. It never made it. The language that we changed in the contract, it never made it over there. The contract that was given was the old contract that I met with the Selma Quarterback Club. They had the old contract, and I gave them the new one. So, you know, we talk about, I represent as a leader doing things right, standing for what's right. And some people do things the way that they want to. But as me as a leader, I want to be as on the committee that Councilwoman Benjamin has been present. Councilwoman Johnson, most of the time we have our meeting, he has been absent, he's out of town. And we bring back whatever we discuss to this whole panel. Even President Bowie have been a part of this, of this meeting. And I don't feel fair that we should table when these, when the Quarterback Club is getting ready to have their, they're on the book for several events.
Where are all the Mr. President?
Hello, Councilwoman Jackson.
I guess, so first I would like to ask, when are those events, when is the first day of those events? If we need to look at, if you decide that we need to table this, and you bring it back all the information that you brought to us previously. However, I recall going over the contract. I didn't come to the Quarterback Club meeting, but I've been at most of the meetings taking notes for you. And so I do recall going over all those fees, all those pricing. And it did not include an upgrade on the prices of the building. Breakup, sit down, we moved back forth on that. However, when we say that someone rents out, is going to rent our building, and it's going to be cleaned, because we're going to have employees to check the building before and after and sign off, and that doesn't occur, we're in violation of our own contract. That's number one. Second, the council determines the pricing, not the mayor, neither the department head. And so if he has erroneously charged, or they have erroneously charged citizens, they need to be reimbursed anyway.
Yes, ma'am.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter whether it's effective today, if it was never in place. So I would, if it's led by the council, I wouldn't mind in all those minutes to ensure, because I don't remember, but I could be wrong, that we do not, we did not put anything in there. But my minutes that I took for you during that time of those meetings, they're on my computer, and they do not include an upgrade in the pricing. It does include.
Changing it.
Right. Include the contract where we added the additional cost for the insurance, the breakup, all those things. But it does not include those things. And so this is not just one issue with one group. It's an issue that, you know, our mayor or department heads have just erroneously charged our citizens. And so we need to make sure that is not happening. If it has, we need to reimburse them.
And may I say something? So we had agreed that the motion for the Quarterback Club was going to be a separate motion, because I didn't want anybody to table to trump anything because of all this other stuff. We agreed that the motion for Quarterback Club was going to be separate, which probably would have passed, and no one would have offered a table on that particular part, I don't believe. And then the simple fix was to bring the minutes. I think that's what the councilment is asking for, the copy of the minutes when it happened. And for the all piece, I think you're going to get some aggravation there for the all and the everyone and the here to force. And that is why we agreed that the motion for the Quarterback Club would be a separate motion, change of motion, to include just the Quarterback Club.
Make the motion.
That was the motion.
A minute motion. Oh, no, she attempted to make that motion, but everybody else in her hair said all, and she repeated all after everybody.
I remember the part of discussion, which President Bowie has a role to play, and you can do that. The thing I'm asking, the thing I'm asking is that what we do is going to be done legally and keep us out of the courtroom, because we do things up here in downtown, terrorizing in the court. And my colleagues advocated this council never vote for those price increases, but yet citizens was being charged. So this has been, so my concern is, let's research the minutes to see if indeed it was a fact this council never voted on it, then we can move forward on that.
Well, I think it's separate motion. She's just talking about one instance, which was for the Quarterback Club. They will come back looking at the minutes to see if they will vote on it. But I don't think they do.
We voted on the contract. I am the chairperson of the committee. I keep going with the minutes and I.
When did you first vote for the Quarterback Club?
Uh, September, September the 9th.
We still have time. I mean, another meeting. We still have time. We're not going to make a decision tonight. So let's just wait if you would.
Okay. And then can I, can I, may I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
The clerk, I have a question to ask the clerk. Ms. Harvey, when we did the, changed the language in the contract, you know, it goes into your end, doesn't it, for the mayor to receive?
The normal process is that the contractor comes to me, then I'll take it to him. But I think in that instance, attorney Jones took the contract to the mayor himself. I recall seeing the contract at all.
So you're saying that attorney, you have, you don't even have, do you have the contract?
No, ma'am, I don't have that.
Okay. So, is there a motion on the floor?
I think President Bowie asked that the council tear this until next.
Be counsel.
Because it will be timed, that's what he said.
Okay.
Because of.
If she would like. I'm just asking for the benefit of the chair, because it is, oftentimes she brings a motion, and she gets totally bamboozled out of her motion, and it's always whatever. So I'm asking for that, that clerk, okay. I'm asking for clarity. That's what I was asking, was a motion on the floor.
No, ma'am. She concurred that she would table it. If my understanding is correct, did you not miss?
First, I would like to put the motion on the floor that we tabled, because one thing that I would like is why I put it on the floor to table is because the contract has not even made it. Our attorney has not given, the clerk doesn't have it, and the mayor. There's a second to that motion. Any further discussion? Madam Chair, roll call, please.
President Bowie, Councilwoman Bolling.
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Okay. The committees are not on the agenda that we had. If you have not reported and have a report, please let me know. Anyone who has a report. Any closing remarks?
Left, left.
I just want to mention again, on August 22nd and 5:30 at Brown Chopper Trig,
I will have my weekly C meeting, so if they're important, you all want to come, you know, I will watch in, please, attend to good. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to the committee?